All right, well, welcome to the June monthly meeting. Call meeting in order, Judy can take a roll. Number two, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the minutes of the May 10th, 21 regular school board meeting and the June 2nd special school meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 10th.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve the May 10th, Desiree second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, hang on just a second, let's, we're splitting.
Lowville?
Yes.
Well, I-
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
And if you need more time for the June 2nd, we'll have to take a few more minutes here. Is that gonna mess you up, Judy, if we split that?
No.
Okay. Any questions on the June 2nd? I'll make a motion to approve the June 2nd special school board meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you, Desiree. Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
I'm staying.
Gibson?
Yes.
Number three, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the general fund, incurments, and warrants.
This month, we only have three purchase orders that were open that were over $1,000, and those work for Lidd and Scottson, which is the rental fees for the portable buildings. And we've talked about that for a while now, getting rid of those. Those will be removed, June 24th and 25th. And so-
This June?
Yes. Here in a couple of weeks, those will be removed. With the admin building, we are in that lease until October. So unfortunately, there's going to be a few months that we still have to pay that rental fee. They would not let us out of that. However, we will save in utilities. There's no removal cost. That was all in the contract and paid upfront. So they will come in with those. I believe the portable at the elementary, when you break that out, is about $1,500 per month, and the admin building is about $1,600. So we should start saving some money there once we get those out. Right now, there's no specific plans for that area over there where the admin building is, but we do have some ideas. Maybe an outdoor classroom area or something like that that our students can utilize. There's some sidewalk concrete that are poured over there, so if we can find a way to still utilize that, that's what we want to try to do, but right now, there's no specific plan. And then internet and farmer's co-op, which is fuel costs, those are the only other two over $1,000 a month. We've been able to keep costs down, everything else is just monthly, monthly bill.
Any other questions or concerns on general fund? I'll make a motion to approve the general fund. Amber's second, Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the building fund.
There are a few items on there, over $1,000. Home Depot, most of that is just supplies that we've been purchasing throughout the Natural gas, we've moved some of our utility costs, as you can see there, to the building fund to save a little bit in our general operating fund. So our gas bill, water bill for the city, and trash, and then the electric bill from AEC, all of those are over $1,000.
Amber's made a motion, I'll second, Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the child nutrition fund.
The only two items that are up there are just food supplies and milk. We are doing our summer food program right now with our employees. Once we get to July, that will, it will start services to Keystone, to that food service company. So at that point, we shouldn't have any more bills coming out, child nutrition until we have a fall. All right?
Lowville will listen for July and August.
Right. But as far as these, these things, that won't be-
I don't know if she has any work before the end of June.
All right. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Desiree second, Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Discussion, number six, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the activity fund report. Do we need to split that, Amber?
Can, yeah, because A is really a completely separate-
All right. So right now, we're just discussing and voting on the activities under-
Anything to go over, Kendrick? Just kind of closing out, closing out here.
Any questions on the activity fund? Motion to approve. Desiree second, Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
And number six, so far, A, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the changing of the name of the activity account on 844 Benevolent Fund, which has a zero balance to Woodshop, as donations have been received.
So we would like to just utilize that 844 account, but change the name there to Woodshop. We previously had a Woodshop account, but it has been closed out, and we've received some donations for that, and we need to make sure that we have a place for that to go. So we could just switch that and rename that account, and then get those funds in there and we can start utilizing them.
Amber's made a motion to approve, I'll second.
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Number seven, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the treasurer's report.
The only thing I would like to say, because this direction was up quite a bit, hopefully, fingers crossed, it will be adjusted.
Yeah, we should find that out in a couple of days, usually.
Yeah.
When we get that. So that has helped out quite a bit. For our fund balance report, I would like to add that right now, we have $427,000 in that general fund, but this month in June, we have to pay our 10-month contracts, two checks plus the regular. So we're gonna get hit pretty hard, and I will explain a little bit more of that later. But right now, it does look better than we anticipated, I'll say that. Building fund, fairly healthy, and we won't get a lot more money if we go into that, but we will be able to move the salary over, maybe a part-time employee salary over to next year and pay out that, which is going to open up some possibilities, and will help us in our general fund next year. So that's kind of the plan there. And as Matt said, our child nutrition fund is in pretty good shape and should be, and should continue to kind of be that way for a while with the food service programs, where everybody, all the students, will get free meals again next year, so to the USDA program. So that's good.
Questions or concerns on treasurer's report?
Motion to approve.
Desiree made a motion to approve, I'll second. Amber's second, Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Number eight, discussion and vote to approve resignations.
Well, we have two resignations. Jeremy Hickman has submitted a resignation as junior high high school principal. Jeremy says in his letter, "I started working in Cherokee in 2010, and I feel like I would be able to give back to the community and the school that I love. I also feel I've left it better off than when I found it. It was an honor to work with so many great teachers and students. And with that being said, I hereby submit my resignation from Cherokee Public Schools." So Jeremy has taken an administrative job in another district, and wish him all best. Our second resignation is for the position of head track coach, and that's, came from Steve Hickman. Coach Hickman retired as a teacher a few years back, but has decided that it's time to hang it up as track coach. Coach Hickman, in his letter, says he came to Cherokee School in August of 1976, and feels that is the right time for me to resign my position as head track coach. I greatly appreciate the time and effort that these young men have donated to the program. Sincerely, Steve Hickman." So kind of bittersweet with both of those. Coach Hickman's had an outstanding career here at Cherokee, leading the track program, and you can see that as you walk up down hallways with the state championships and the runners-up that his teams have achieved. But I got to see him today, and he's thinking very happy, and I think ready for the next part, and get to go watch his grandkids run some track. I'm sure he'll probably still be coaching them up, but we will miss him.
Make a motion to approve resignations.
Second.
Amber's second, Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Number nine, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve fundraisers submitted.
We've got two fundraisers, one for next fiscal year. They would like to sell T-shirts during the Fourth of July, that this is something that they've done in the past, so that they can buy uniform and equipment, bags, and then football. What we would like to do, we've seen this done with some college programs, but we haven't done this before. We would like to try a letter campaign where players will give us a list of addresses, and we will have a letter detail what donated funds we use for the program and the advantages to our program. Like I said, this, we've seen this done at colleges, and we've had some pretty good response from the players as far as doing this. But we haven't done it before, it's just something we would like to try and see how it works out, but equipment prices are going up, so we need to maintain some good equipment in football.
Motion to approve A and B on number nine.
Second.
Amber's second, Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Number 10, discussion and possible board action to appoint superintendent Shawn Barker as agent to assure compliance for the AHERA programs, purchasing agent, hearing officer for vocational programs, complaints and civil rights complaints, risk manager of OSHA programs, and the official representative and acting agent for the board in connection with applying for any federal, state, local funds such as E-Rate, all the titles and any grants or other programs that benefit Cherokee Public Schools for the school year '21-'22 as listed.
And I believe this is just kind of a housekeeping thing, as we may get ready to move into the next fiscal year, beginning of next year, just give me the authority to sign off on all of those things listed.
Amber's made a motion, Desiree second, Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Number 11, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the temporary appropriations for '21-'22 school year.
So just the temporary appropriations allow us to start the new fiscal year and undertake the conferences before we get the actual estimate needs that has to be approved later, but this allows us to get things started and moving forward in the next fiscal year.
Questions? Amber's made a motion.
I'll second.
Desiree second, Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Number 12, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve a resolution authorizing the district to transfer unobligated funds from Fund 01, Building Bond Fund, to the General Fund 11 for operating purposes in the amount of $200,000.
So what we can do, one option, is in the Riff Bond Fund, which is the fund that we'll pay towards our lease, lease purchases, there is an excess of approximately $230,000 in there right now. Those funds have already met their obligations for what they were collected for. And so through this process, we can transfer those funds into the general fund and use those for operating expenses or anything else the general fund would be used for. But in order to have access to that money, we need to go through or approval and do that the right way. And so in speaking with the bondsman, we have to make sure that we maintain a balance of $436,000 in that Riff Bond Fund, so that when next year's collections come in, there will be enough to make those payments. And I put in here $200,000, there is an excess of about $236,000, but you know, just to make sure that we don't take every penny there. I recommend that we pass this resolution that would allow us to transfer those funds over, and that is going to help with our fund balance towards the end of this fiscal
Questions? Make a motion to approve the resolution to transfer the obligated funds as listed.
I'll second.
Desiree second, Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Number 13, board to consider adoption of a resolution approving and affirming a lease purchase agreement and authorizing the execution of the same, designating lease transaction as a full-time tax exempt obligation, authorizing employment of school district council, financial advisor, and bond counsel pertaining to financing, and authorize the school district officials to execute any and all necessary documents in connection with the aforementioned transactions.
So we have already actually done this and approved this resolution, but in speaking with our bondsman after the last meeting, he said we need to put it back in there and have it word for word. They just would rather have it in the minutes there. Yeah. Technicality. We did this back in December, and that was to give them permission to explore those lease purchases. We did everything right there, they just need to have all of those, all of that resolution in and on the agenda for the minister.
Amber's made a motion to approve, I'll second, Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Number 14, proposes executive session to discuss personnel, including salaries and contracts for the school year '21-'22, personate 25 OS 307 B1, motion. Amber's made a motion to convene, I'll second. Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Let's see, 14C. Make a motion to acknowledge the adjutant's decision. Second.
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
During the executive session, we discussed personnel to include salaries and contracts for the school year '20-'21-'22, personate 25 OS statute 307 B1.
Thank you. Number 15, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the employment of Keela Patterson as the elementary principal for the school year '21-'22. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Desiree second, Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Number 16, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the employment of Wayne Pruitt as the junior high high school principal for the '21-'22 school year. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Desiree second, Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Number 17, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the employment of Amy Eckert as an elementary teacher for the '21-'22 school year. I'll make a motion to approve. Desiree second, Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Number 18, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the '21-'22 membership of the district with the OASG Orgmans Comp Insurance in the amount of $18,196, OASIG Insurance in the amount of $98,267.
Our Public Schools Insurance Group insurance premium, as you can see, has gone up $31,000 this year, and that is due to the annual 2.05% increase that we usually get each year. But on top of that, after talking to them, they have started doing appraisals every five years. We have not, we have been with this company since 2005, and they have not done an appraisal of any of our property during that time. So they did one, and our value has gone up since last year, $3.5 million, our property value has. So that is why there is such a large increase and such a big increase in property value on those premiums. And they have told me that they expect appraisals to, that kind of become normal practice now, it's about every five years, they will do appraisals for all their schools, and we were just lucky enough to-
Squeaked by as far as we did.
Well, yeah, to this point, but obviously, since 2005, we've had lots of improvements now, so that is a very, very big increase there, but necessary to have.
Questions? Amber's made a motion, I'll second, Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
19, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the annual contract with precision testing laboratories for districts of bestest and maintenance services in the amount of
Same thing each year, I believe, pretty routine, and then come around, check everything.
Motion to approve. Amber's second, Judy?
Is that Amber? Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
20, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve district's return to learn plan for the '21-'22 school year.
So with the ARP9, which is the American Rescue Plan, there is a lengthy application process that we will have to go to, and the first step in that process is that we have to have our '21-'22 return to learn plan posted to our school website by June 22nd. Now, we have to show that it was posted and published by June 22nd, we will have six months to make revisions. So at this point, all that I've done is update some contact information and a few other minor adjustments, but through this, this return to learn plan, there are nine areas that have to be in compliance with what the CDC safety recommendations are. We have addressed nine different areas. Almost all nine areas are addressed in our current return to learn plan. There's one area that I'm going to draw attention to, and I want to be pretty clear when I explain this, but it has to do with masks. Okay? So what we had in there was what we, you know, did last year, but according to the federal program, part of this recommendation is that universal and correct wearing of masks. What's that means is you have to follow the CDC guidelines for wearing them. So in here, for now, all I put is that Cherokee Public Schools will require that face coverings be worn correctly according to CDC guidelines if a federal, state, or local decision to mandate is made. So all that's saying is that if that has to happen, then we will follow the CDC safety recommendations for correct wearing of those. But that is, that is one of the very specific criteria that has to be in here. Like I said, we have six months to make revisions, so if there's any changes, and this is going to be an evolving process, but we do pretty quickly have to have this posted in order to qualify for those funds, and that's $548,000 is what we would get from that. But this is the first step in that, that complete application and budget, everything has to be completed for that by August the 19th. But once we post this, we will have six months to make complete revisions to it. So there's a lot of things in there that we will have to address and change, but for right now, I just updated contact information and put that one little blurt in there about that, because all of the other areas are already addressed in some fashion in here.
Even in that scenario, if something new came about, and that, and that came to be that they were requiring, and we just totally disagreed with it, we could vote-
I'll be honest, I'm not even gonna worry about all that right now.
No, I know, I could vote.
Because I don't think that's something that we even need to worry about.
Right.
So, because that, there is legislation out there, and different things going on. I don't think that that would be an issue, I don't think it'll be something we have to worry about for right now. I think we just need to have this in there and get it posted by June 22nd, take the first step. But I just want to make sure that that was addressed in there, and that's really why, is I want to make sure it's approved, nine, it's in our minutes, so that we can show that it was board approved in that application process.
Good. Motion to approve the learn, return to learn plan for the '21-'22 school year. Amber's second, Judy?
Lowville?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
21, superintendent's report.
You notice I did put a principal's report on there. There's several things that I'm gonna go over that will include some of those things that we normally mention there, if I can find them. Just to get some updates on summer projects at this point, there's really not a lot that we're doing. We have no big summer projects that we're taking on this year, but just the normal at the elementary, Billy and Bucky, and Christie Graham's been over there, and Brent Walburn, and they pretty well finished up the floors. That's kind of the main thing we're focusing on this year, take care of our floors in both buildings. They've been helping move some classroom stuff around, but no big projects this summer. Fortunately, we don't really have a lot of things that need to be addressed that would be a big undertaking. We did have Thomas Wessels from AC came up with Billy and I last week, and we kind of did a walkthrough of this building, and just went over all of our heating and air units. That is one area that will be- That is one area that will be a possibility if we choose to address in the budget with the federal funds. Those are things that we can look at. I thought it was a good meeting and was kind of encouraged to know that really most of our older units are in the north end of this building. And I'll conclude, we haven't had a whole lot of issues with any of those. There are some that just don't work at all and haven't worked for a very long time, but they haven't caused us any problems, but that will be one thing that we might consider looking at is updating those. But the rest of our units are in pretty good shape. That could be a big expense, so that's one area that we want to look at over there. As I mentioned earlier, the portable building will be removed towards the end of this month. We do own one of those portables at the elementary, but the other one will be removed and once those are both gone, and like I said, we have to pay only one until October, but after that, and that's going to be a $3,100 amount saving plus whatever the utilities would cost for those buildings. So I think that's going to be a good move for us and then we will take a look at that area where the admin building is and try to come up with something good for the students to use and utilize that area right now. Summer activities, we have several things that are going on, getting ready to happen. We've got several things that have already happened. The SCCLA is going to be attending nationals in Nashville, June 27th through July 2nd. FFA has their officer retreat, June 30th through July 2nd at Roberts Cave. Basketball has had a couple of camps already and they have some more coming up. Football camp, we had high school, we had a two-day team camp here, we have five other schools here, really good two days for us. Summer league, softball and baseball, T-ball, all that's in full swing and I believe that wraps up towards the end of June. We have the USA track and field meet that will be hosted again here on June 19th and so we expect a big crowd here that day. 2017 was the last time we hosted that, we're supposed to host that last summer, but we'll host that this summer on June 19th. So we're starting to make kind of our final preparations. We don't have a lot to do with that, but the stuff that we do is quite a bit of work. So hopefully that will bring in a lot of people to community again. We've had, this past week, we had several kids compete in a one-one classic bowl activities. Noah Leslie played basketball, Richard Willheim cheerleading basketball, Macy Goodwin with basketball, and then Ruston James and Damian Lovato played the football game last Saturday night, and that was a really good game, good event. And then we also have several that are going to be going to Miami, Oklahoma for the eight-man All-Star Week next week. Ruston James, Damian Lovato, and Matthew Reeves will be playing that game. Richard Willheim, Lanny Golden, and Katie Dunn will be cheerleading. And then we have the 4th of July coming up and Lions Club and Rotary have already passed. We'll have it here at the complex like we did last year, so looking forward to that. And I know that Billy and Bucky and those guys will have that looking good over there. Couple, couple other things to report on, kind of some bad news, good news, but you know, the bad news is we still have a couple financial hurdles to get through as we close out this fiscal year. It does appear that our general fund balance as of June 30th will probably still be in the negative and we've been working against that all year, doing lots of different things. We've had several people that have left throughout the years, we absorbed those positions if that happened. We shifted around some utilities, we've really just eliminated all extra spending in areas out of our general fund. And originally, some of those early projections were showing us anywhere from $800,000 to almost a million dollars in the negative and as of today, that number is closer to $200,000 in the negative. So that's still bad news, but we have made some gains and some strides with what we've been up against this year. And there's a process that will happen when, when that negative fund balance ends your fiscal year. That will have to go to a judgment and then, once that goes, we've entered an agreement with ACV Bank, they will step in and kind of pick up that tab and then over the course of three years, the sinking fund that we utilize, that money will be collected through that to pay that off over those three years. That's why we also did what we did with the lease purchase, kind of trying to plan for that and offset some of those things. That lease purchase, not refinancing that and getting that much dollar interest rate is going to save us a little over $100,000 in collections each year. So if we can get that number down low with what we did with the lease purchase, there really shouldn't be too much impact as far as tax collections and things like that go with this judgment. But that's kind of, you know, that last hurdle and then, once we get through that, and we will get through that, this isn't the first time that's ever happened to a school system. It does happen with cash flow problems. We've already talked about a lot of the reasons that those things have happened and we've made adjustments for next year to make sure that that doesn't happen. Tax protest also plays a part in that. I mean, that is money that we should have collected and didn't, those are still going on. And so when we create our budget moving into next year, we will, we're going to plan that budget as if we will get nothing out of that tax protest and just take an ultra-conservative approach to it. And so some of the cuts and the things that we've had to do have seemed very drastic, but we have to plan for those drastic things to happen. And so as we get into July and now that we have this ARP money and lease funds and we build budgets, we're going to look at all those things together, kind of take a big, you know, 30,000-foot look at everything from up in the air and do what's best for our students and our school and put those things together so that we can get back on our feet, hopefully a little quicker than maybe anticipated and start getting back to doing the things that we like. Kind of mentioned earlier in the child nutrition report that next year, the USDA has the seamless summer program, is that still what it's called? Okay, so that will continue, so all of our students will get free breakfast at once, once again, just like they had this past school year. Teachers and staff will have to pay, but our students will get free meals once again. So that will not be something that we had to do, that kind of came in late, within the last probably six weeks, maybe, maybe two months ago, that was finalized and we just want to make sure that that process was, that program was still going to take place. We do have Keystone coming on as our food service program and they will begin in July. We'll still have meal distribution, might be done a little bit different, so we'll update everybody once we get those details, but that, that will still happen. All those things being said, there is still some good news and, you know, that's tonight, you guys approved hiring back one of our teachers that we did have to reduce and all that is done because we had some resignations come in that we weren't planning on, it opened up a lot of doors and possibilities and so we tried to take advantage of those things and we've been able to get teachers back in places that we feel like they're the best suited for and will provide our students with the best education by doing those things. So hiring back Amy, one teacher that had been rived, we're kind of slowly starting to heal some of those wounds and get us going back in the right direction. Very excited about Mrs. Patterson and Mr. Pruitt coming on in those principal positions and being those building leaders and just giving both of these buildings that we have and this entire district a good positive look. There was a lot of, I think some concern from teachers, just not knowing a lot of the questions that we had come up and being able to move around, putting people in different positions. So I think with this, with Mr. Pruitt and Mrs. Patterson coming on and being able to leave these buildings, I think that it's going to alleviate a lot of that and just bring back a lot of positivity, which is something that we haven't been able to have a lot of. As I mentioned, with the federal funds, with the return to learn plan, it's a lengthy process, but we've been allocated $548,585. So that's going to give us a lot of opportunities to address a lot of different areas. There is criteria that 20% of that must be spent on learning loss and there are certain areas that that has to be identified, which I don't think any school out there is going to have trouble finding those areas and being able to match that 20%. So as we get into July, there are deadlines, we will have to go through a few hoops, create a budget for that money and figure out how that's going to best serve the school and students. And then like I said earlier, all that will be due by August 19th, but the quicker we can get that built and get that in there, it's just going to help us so much and then moving forward into next year, we're still going to have to be very conservative, but you know, like I've said kind of all along, we're going to make sure that we put our students first in whatever decisions that we make and having Mr. Pruitt, Mr. Patterson, Mrs. Patterson on board with those decisions. Now, I'm very excited about that and the direction that our school's going.
Number 23, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second. No, I'm sorry, skip one. New business, there's no new business, no new business. Number 23, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
One second.
Desiree's second, Judy.
Littleville?
Yes.
Willheim?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.